I'm calling the Simsbury Board of Education November 12th meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for being here. I will start with public audience. Mrs. Noble, state your name and your address.
I'm Chris Noble, 15 Fairchild, Terracille. I'm a longtime, longtime volunteer for Simsbury Community TV. My husband and I have been volunteering for over 25 years. And I have to admit, a lot of my time was in this room. Initially, I started when we had two cameras with people. I was one of them. We'd stand for hours and watch these meetings and record them. I have to admit, the Board of Education is not known for short meetings. So we had some lengthy meetings. Many years passed, and pretty soon better technology arrived. Therefore, Simsbury Community TV spent over $40,000 to install the three robotic cameras that are in this room and the three robotic cameras that are downstairs in the main meeting room. And that allowed us to record meetings with much better picture quality, just amazing picture quality compared to the old cameras. Now, you might ask, how do we raise our funds? We're coming to the sticking point now. We rely on Simsbury residents. We rely on organizations inside of Simsbury. We rely on Comcast. We rely on Frontier. Now, the situation is every time someone signs up with Comcast, we get a few pennies each month from them. Unfortunately, when they decide to scrap cable, we lose money. And this is what's been happening. Cable subscribers are jumping ship. And consequently, we're the innocent bystanders here that are getting hit. We still are doing the same thing. And you can always watch us on our website. We're always there if you don't have cable. So we are readily available. And what are we going to do about this? Because we are anticipating a deficit this year, which we can't obviously operate with the deficit. So we need community help. We need your help in every way that we can. We feel that we help to keep Simsbury in the know. The newspapers are iffy. You can't really rely on them anymore. We have an opportunity here to help. And I'm going to be passing out our financial request to all of you. Some of you have already paid. And for that, I am so grateful that you have donated to us already. But if you can't use the letter yourself, we'll do pass it on to someone. In the meantime, keep Simsbury in the know with Simsbury Community TV. Thank you.
Mrs. Noble, how many years did you spend teaching in the Simsbury district as well?
Twenty-five.
So that's something that everyone should know. You are not leaving education. You've been in education a very long time.
A very long time. Somebody might say, get a life. Well, this is mine.
It works for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's very important information. Thank you very much for sharing. Moving on to board and administrative communications.
Yes, so there's been a lot going on these past couple of weeks. So at Latimer Lane, they held their annual Latimer Lane Halloween Parade and Dance on October 25th. Our students dressed in amazing costumes and played at the Halloween. Friday afternoon, the second family tree meeting and the school-wide assembly was held. Their family groups created family crests that were displayed in the cafeteria for the rest of the year. And these crests represented the members of each family unit and the things that are important to each of them. They hosted many of our veterans and their families, starting with breakfast at 8:00 this morning, followed by a recognition program starting at 8:30. And they appreciate all their veterans in their school family and were excited to honor them on this fifth day. At Tooten Hills, they had their annual fun run, which was designed to build community and camaraderie among students and staff. They hosted an Election Day bake sale on November 5th to raise money for the 5th grade trip to Camp Tool. And they had a family, no, they will be having a family art night tomorrow night, where families can come, join together, and enjoy a fun night of painting and decorating a family rock to put on display in the front of the school. They will be collecting for the Trop Monday 18th through Wednesday 25th. At Squadron Line, they have been busy. It's been a busy week for them, where they've been hard at work preparing for their Veterans Day Assembly today. They look forward to spending time as a school community honoring those who served in the armed forces to protect our freedom. At Central, on October 25th, they began an exciting new effort called the Peaceful School Bus Program. This program helps to create community and responsibility among students who share arrival and dismissal plans. Whether they ride the bus or walk to school, they hope that this program will make all students' experiences coming to school and going home from school easier, safer, and more enjoyable. At Terracille, there's big congratulations to be had to the students who participated in the Creative Kids Sale. They raised $215 for the House of Bread. On October 25th was Ms. Sullivan's last day at Terracille. And we wish her the best in her new position as math coach at Latimer Lane. And they say we are lucky to have Ms. Erasmus as our new 3rd grade teacher. At Henry James, they celebrated Unity Day, a nationally recognized day to focus on their anti-bullying efforts. Students and staff dressed in orange, and every student had a post-it on their locker with a positive message from a peer. They also held their Fall Fest, full of fun and games and all planned by the Student Council. For Veterans Day, students from Family Consumer Science presented a student-made quilt to a Simsbury veteran. Announcements were made by students over the loudspeaker every period with information about veterans. And veterans will be here on Wednesday and Thursday to tell students about their military experience. HMS will be collecting non-perishable donations from November 2nd to the 19th. And students have been bringing in lots of items to the main office for donation. Their students have been encouraged to enter the peace poster contest sponsored by the Lions Club with prizes of $25, $50, and $75 for the top 3 winners. And this past week, the Say Something Anonymous reporting system was introduced and launched at Henry James. This program teaches students, teachers, and administrators how to recognize the warning signs and signals, especially within social media, of individuals who may be a threat to themselves or others and say something to a trusted adult or use its anonymous reporting system. And finally, if all remains on schedule, they're getting close to their first move to the newly renovated space, which should take place just prior to Thanksgiving break and will involve the move of 8 classrooms and many student lockers.
Wow, lots of good information.
You covered it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sharon?
So I'd like to report that I attended the PD last Friday.
Professional Development Day?
Yes, and it was my first one. And I'm glad that I attended. And I actually sat in on some of the classes. So, great experience.
Good stuff, right?
Yes.
Excellent. Brian?
Nothing to report.
Jen?
I just want to report that I haven't, forgot about you. I apologize for not being at meetings. But I've been doing a lot of work on behalf of National School Board Association, especially in DC. We've had board meetings. And as you know, a couple of months pre-coming to the elections, there's a lot of work for advocacy for different constituents around the country in behalf of the education platforms that they were presenting. So that is over, so we're glad with that. And then we'll start in January for the next congressional session. But I also attended the PD. And it was really enlightening to hear Commissioner Miguel Cardona speak to us regarding his platform for education and his work in equity throughout the state with the districts. So it's always enjoyable to hear him. And moving forward, he will be coming to our CAPE CAPS convention this Friday and Saturday. As you know, we have it every year. And we have the delegate assembly on Thursday, which will be convening to vote on the proposed resolutions that we will take forward to our own Connecticut legislature come February. And so the kickoff will be Friday morning. And Commissioner Cardona will be there. We also have Derrick Gay as one of our speakers. So we've got about 700 attendees attending. So lots of good speakers, good sessions, both Friday and Saturday. So I'm hoping, I know Susan's planning and coming, and I didn't know if you were planning.
Sure.
Also, so it will be a very informative, you know, long conference, but good. So on the other hand, I'd like to also just put in a little advertisement here. On Monday, there will be the Promise to Jordan event at Simsbury High School, Monday afternoon. And this is a really important event for not only our students, but also for the community. And this is an event with making the understanding for substance abuse disorders within our community. And so this is the first time this is being held. It's a poster project. There will also be food trucks and music there. But the important thing is what the Promise to Jordan, and I am on that committee, is to make awareness of what is going on within our community. And not only in the school communities, but also in the community as a whole. So it's an advocacy for this issue. It's open to anyone. It is free. Let's hope the weather calms and will be good for us. And we have the backing of school administration. Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
I think we have some groups, youth groups, coming in from Canton, I heard, and other towns as well.
Yes, yes. So it's open to all.
Hopefully as well attended.
Yes, it's open to all the other high schools.
What time is it?
So this is 1:30 to 4:30. And the premise for this was Lisa Gray, who is chairman of Chamber Commerce ED. So she lost her son a few years ago, Jordan, this is the name of it, to substance abuse. And it is something that she has been very prolific and very strong about, the awareness and the advocacy in what is going on. So we, the committee, has been working very diligently on promoting this. And as I say, it's open to anyone. It's for a few hours on Monday. We hope that they come and they understand what is happening within our community, not just here, but around the country. So that's for Monday.
At Simsbury High School?
At Simsbury High School. Thank you, Tara. So hope to see you all there and hope we have a very good turnout and a very meaningful event. And hopefully, it may continue as an annual event for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a lot, Lydia. Are you competing with Kayla over there?
Never. You always have the floor, always.
How's it? Sue?
I'm good, thanks.
Just real quickly, just to commend Squadron Line for the assemblies they had for Veterans Day yesterday. It was an amazing, amazing show. There, plus, as big as that parking lot was, it was overflowing parking on the streets. It was an amazing turnout. So just to commend them on that event. And just, secondly, I'd be remiss if I didn't second what Kayla said about the Turkey Trot. Jack Bannon was my 6th grade teacher at Squadron. So I have a personal connection to this. And just an amazing member. And what a way to honor him with his commitment to service and to help out on the Turkey Trot. So just encourage the community and everybody to get engaged in that one as well.
Excellent. Mrs. Hamrock Lindicky?
Great, just wanted to share with the board that this Thursday will be our next Equity Council meeting from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. We're having a location switched from this room to Simsbury High School. So that's exciting. And we'll be providing the board with an equity update during our first meeting in December.
Great.
Thank Kayla for mentioning the Say Something Anonymous reporting system that we presented to the board earlier this fall. The middle school launch was highly successful last week. Scott Baker and Aunt Jeanette Belmonte did a fabulous job presenting it to the students. I was able to attend all those sessions. We decided to go with kind of a rolling launch. So Wednesday and Thursday of this week, they'll do 9th and 10th grade at Simsbury High School. And then next week, it'll be 11th and 12th grade. So by the time we're together again, the whole program will be fully launched. And we're excited to get it going. We've been talking about it for a little while now.
I would just like to echo all of the celebrations for the veterans. We've been in school for a number of years now. And the opportunity for teachers to engage students in conversations about this topic has just been outstanding. So I'm glad to know that you were able to witness, you know, one of those as well. The other, everybody's talked about a little bit, the professional development that we had last Tuesday. This was the brochure that was made and given to all of the teachers with the description of 51 presentations that were offered for teachers. We had over 75 of our teachers present to their colleagues on Tuesday. It was outstanding. Neil and I pretty much went around and checked every one of them out. And the engagement and the presence of people at all of the presentations was really, really quite beautiful to see. So the afternoon was a professional learning opportunity that teachers designed themselves. And I had a number of people that stopped me or emailed me and said, thank you for the afternoon. I've never had an afternoon like that available for us or me to really work on something that we felt was really important at this point in time. So it turned out to be a pretty productive day overall. So.
Fabulous. Mr. Cruz?
Yes, one thing in your folders as well is a copy of the budget calendar. And that outlines key dates and key presentations and audiences. We are well underway with school-based budgets being due in the next week or so. And we'll start gathering that information and analyzing our fixed costs. But it really will kick off with our 3-board meeting. We're still working on that date. It's either the 3rd or 5th of December. But conversation is well underway. And we'll get that process up and running before too long.
Great, thank you very much. And again, thank you to Mrs. Noble for speaking out on SCTV, because I think it's really important. We don't always have a great audience here, but I hear from people at the supermarket that they're watching it at home. And I think if SCTV wasn't here, it'd be a lot more difficult to know what's going on. And it's important for us to know that you know, as a public. The public knows what we're doing here and can participate anytime they feel that they'd like to. Moving on, approval of minutes for the October 22nd meeting? Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Great, 2 extensions. Now we're moving on to the approval of the Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury School Administrators and Supervisors.
Okay, I'll take that. So I lead the Personnel Negotiations Committee. And we're going to go over 2 of the negotiations tonight that we completed this year. The first one is the, it's SASSA. It's Simsbury School Administrators and Supervisors Association. These are the school principals, administrators. A lot of time goes into these negotiations. Scott Baker kind of led the administrators. And Neil and Burke on our side do most of the heavy lifting. A lot of work by everybody. In the package, everybody's got the details. I'll just kind of give some of the highlights. We've actually moved to a, this is going to be a 4-year contract this year. And I think what's important for everybody to know is that this was a negotiated settlement. So discussions back and forth between the board and the administrators. And we didn't have to go to mediation. We came to an agreement before we got to that part. So it was a very tidy process. 4 years duration with a general wage of 2.25% each year in those 4 years, just about at the state average. Lot of other discussions with some language. And spent a lot of time looking at pharmaceutical cost savings. That was kind of a theme across all of the negotiations this year. Do you think there's any other details? I think that really is the high level. If anyone wants to add anything else. I guess I also need to thank, on our side, the whole committee. It's Jeff and Sue and Brian and myself. Lot of work between the 2. And I'll talk a little bit more about it when we get to the SEA. But this was still, it's time. And multiple meetings, so time is probably people's most precious commodity. So that's, I thank everybody for all of their help on this. So I'm going to move.
Well, does anyone have any questions or thoughts? There you go. Go for it.
All right, so I'm going to move that the Board of Education ratified the proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury School Administrators and Supervisors Association for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2024.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. We've got the best in the business. I'm glad we found, we've got a good contract.
Yes, yes. Can we just go right into the next?
Please.
Next item is the Simsbury Education Association. This is our biggest collective bargaining group. These are the teachers. And, you know, again, I want to thank Neil and Burke and our team. A lot of time, a lot of meetings spent on this contract in particular. I also want to really thank the representatives on the teacher's side. Kara Masler, Keith Berthium, Jamie Seepa, Brian Foreman. The passion and the stewardship that they present for their group. Everyone should be very proud of the representation that they bring to the table. I know it was, it's very obvious when you're going and you're talking about these things. It's, they're in good hands. And it was a very good process. And a lot of time, a lot of discussion. But where we ended up on the wages, this is, we're staying with a 3-year agreement on this agreement. For each year, we have a 1.75 increase for the maximum, the top step, and 0.5 for each step below that. What that comes out to is a 9.99% increase cumulatively over the 3 years, which is above the state average. And it's, it puts us in the right place, puts our teachers in the right place for our peers. It moves us in the right direction. As with the administrators, we spent time on the pharmaceutical cost savings. And there are a lot of other things in the contract that, some language, some, you know, payments, you know, when teachers cover for other teachers. There are stipends for that. So all of these things were discussed and decided upon and agreed upon. And I think it was a good process, long process. But I think everybody was pleased. Unless anybody has?
Anyone have any questions or thoughts?
I'd like to say, as Todd mentioned, a big thanks to Neil and Burke for all the time and effort that they put into this, the material they provided us for these discussions. It was incredibly helpful. And I think we reached a fair deal for both sides. And obviously, Todd greatly appreciates your leadership on all this. You represented us well. So thank you.
Everybody did a great job.
Thank you very much. Well, in that case?
Tara, if you don't mind, I would like to add just, I think the public should know that we are also advised by Shipman &amp; Goodwin in negotiating these contracts. I mean, especially with the SEA contract. It's by far the biggest driver of our budget. It's important in terms of the financial health of the district. And, you know, to have that professional assistance while we guide that is important. And it's another place where we're represented by the best, where Tom Mooney comes in and assists us with the teachers' negotiation. It's another partner that's now helping us with the administrators. But they're both excellent. And it's a, so I appreciate that people are thanking me and Burke, but we also have some assistance from the professionals at Shipman &amp; Goodwin.
Thank you very much. Good point. Would you like to make a question?
I will, I will. I'll move that the Board of Education ratified the proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury Education Association for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023.
Second? All those in favor? Opposed? And thank you all very much for the amount of time, the hours that these volunteers sitting here, and the teachers, and the administrators, and everyone who was involved. It was hours and hours of hard work. And they were respectful and thoughtful and caring of each other. And it was, it's really impressive. It gets you to really appreciate our team and our district and our teachers and how everyone can work together. We really appreciate it. Moving on, duh-duh-duh. So we are going to be having a tri-board meeting, budget prep meeting, which will be the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and our Board of Education. So we are going to cancel the November 26th Board of Education meeting. I would like to recommend we cancel the board meeting on the 26th. It's also, we're getting into Thanksgiving, and it's a busy time for everyone. So if that is of interest to all of you, I would accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
The November 26th meeting?
26th meeting.
Excellent, anyone would like to second that? Thank you, Jen. All those in favor? It's not that we're 1 meeting less, because we still have a tri-board meeting, but it does help.
The following week.
The following week. The following week.
Yeah. I don't want to be here.
Okay, so we're good. Now we're moving on to, you guys can wake up. You guys can wake up. Sorry about all our homework, but it's very nice for you to come back. Facilities Enrollment Task Force?
Yes.
I'll send it off.
Thank you, Tara. So I want to welcome Eddie and Jeff are back from Tech Don. It's their 2nd presentation to the board. And I thought I would just kind of set the stage for those people listening at home and kind of reframe where we are as a board in terms of this overall kind of large-scale process that we've been involved with. So I'm going to go way back for a minute to when the town really committed significant financial resource to go out in search for an architectural firm that could help us, really with 3 major things. I've said all along, there's 3 parts to this study. The first being a real assessment of our current conditions. We engaged in that work last year. We reported that work out to the Board of Ed. We reported that work out to the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force. And we held the public forum relative to that. And we produced a document that is very significant that will help to feed our capital improvement plan for the next 10 to 15 years in terms of identifying priorities. The 2nd piece of that ran hand in hand. And that was a real deep dive with the new company, Malone &amp; McBroom, into looking at our demography and recognizing some of the shifting trends we're seeing in our population and starting to see how enrollment has now flattened out and is going to start to significantly grow at the elementary level again. And the 3rd piece is where we sit right now. And that is to start to look at alternate configurations, different options and ideas for the numbers of our school buildings, the grade-level configurations, with the goal in mind of creating a 10- to 15-year master facilities plan. So we, again, we've had several meetings with the Facilities Task Force to go over these options, several meetings with our Administrative Council, as we call it, to come up with our best thinking to this point. We wanted to share that with the Board of Ed this evening. Obviously, no decisions are final. It's our thinking of the group to this point as we prepare to share our thinking at a public forum next week, the 20th.
I would just explain the Facility Enrollment Task Force. Can we do a little history on who's on it and how long it's been in existence?
Sure, sure. That's a group that's been in existence for close to a decade now, actually. I've been superintendent 8 years. It's a group I started working with initially when I came in. It was tasked to respond to the enrollment trends at the time and start to look at different solutions relative. We had modulators that we removed and came up with plans. So it's a group that represents staff, administration, and community members, as well as board members. Board of Finance is represented on that as well. So it's a collaborative group with vested interests in the work that we're doing. And they've been really productive in helping us and pushing our thinking so far.
Great, thank you.
Give you the rundown? Okay, so that's kind of setting the stage. I think I kind of talked through your first couple of slides. I apologize for that.
That's all right.
But I will kick it to you guys. I appreciate you being here.
Great, thank you, thank you, Matt. My name's Jeff Wazinski, principal at Tech Don Architects. Eddie and I will kind of walk you through, it's kind of a brief overview. We handed out printed copies, because we made some adjustments as throughout the day, as we were refining some of the information. But tonight, we're really going to summarize the goals, the why, basically. Go over some of the project history and our process. And then really focus most of our time on outlining the options. The, kind of discuss the summary of options that we've considered, the process that we went through to kind of refine them. The present thinking, the best thinking to date, the key objectives of the options, so we can highlight those. And then solicit feedback and comments in preparation for next week's public forum. So you've seen this slide before, but we were asked about a year ago, almost now, So you've seen this slide before, but we were asked about a year ago, almost now, to look at the three major categories that Matt outlined, but analyzing the existing conditions and assessments, which we have, the 10 to 15-year prioritized capital plan. We're looking through the reconfiguration and options, and we've already completed the demographics. So the ultimate goal is a long-range plan for the community, and it's a plan. So, project history, we're going to fly through this fairly quickly. Mentioned, we started really early in 2009, of this year, 2019, or late last year, and worked on the existing conditions all the way through to demographics. We've developed options, a series of options, all throughout the summer and into fall, and we're basically at this moment right now to review these options and discuss them as a community to see what, what makes sense and what. So, key points from the first forum, just wanted to highlight that obviously demographics were a part of it, and the housing development was analyzed in great detail. I'm not going to go over all that, but key takeaways, you're looking at somewhere around 300-plus student increase over the next five years in K to six. Grade categories, and the fastest growth is at Latimer, Squadron, and Central. So you can see the percentages there. This is the birth hotspots that kind of just reinforces that finding that Patrick had presented at the first public forum. I thought this was a helpful graphic to kind of just see, obviously, the red is the most intense, and you can see where it falls on the town. They, what's important is the information that we utilized for the options or the creation and development of the options is we utilized the projections based on the mid, medium range, right? So it wasn't the high, low, but it was right in the middle. This is a graphic from Malone and McBroom that, again, illustrates the detail of the enrollment increase in each of the elementary schools, which is actually very important when we start considering the options. Other pieces that we, key takeaways from the first forum is basically, in all the elementary schools, that no, none of them have been, received a comprehensive renovation during their lifespan. Are you get, you're not getting the presentation?
Got the camera forward.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so the facilities have certainly been well-maintained, and, you know, the community has received solid value on their investment, which I think is a key takeaway, a key piece from our existing conditions assessment. And then, obviously, most of the need that we found is in the elementary schools. So we're kind of just setting it up. These are some of the key graphics that you find in that large book that Matt had mentioned on the existing conditions. Other pieces and elements from our first findings on the existing conditions. Really, the facilities, with exception to Squadron and the elementary schools, the facilities have been added to, modified multiple times during their lifespan, which has led to what we find, or we found, inefficient layouts. And we'll show you a graphic that kind of relates to that and the impact that it has not only on the building, but on the educational space as well. And then, the core facilities, meaning bathrooms, cafeterias, gymatoriums or cafeteriums, kitchens, they all need to be addressed. And we hit that pretty hard in the first public forum, but just wanted to reiterate that. This graphic, don't want to go into, it's a vintage plan, but this just further illustrates that the elementary schools have been added to in multiple years, multiple vintages, which makes it awfully difficult to, to assess, but also to renovate. And here's the key graphic that we did on one school, anyway, Latimer, where when you measure the overall building footprint compared to the blue area there, which is the, what we call the circulation factor, the efficiency factor, when you measure the gray to the blue, you end up with about a 40% relationship, right? A 40% blue to gray overall gross square footage. So that's the efficiency factor in this building. And as a net result of adding to this building over time and the circuitous circulation, a typical building, you would expect around 25 to 30%. So what, what does that mean? What it means is you're, if you were to measure it to an efficiently laid-out newer building or renovated building, you're losing out about 4,800 to 7,300 square feet of educational space. So it's real, real space that you're missing because of some of these inefficiencies in the buildings that are found. So, other key points, we mentioned comprehensive renovations, no facility has seen it programmatically, really using every space possible in the buildings. And I thought this was an interesting statistic, that if you take the average age of the original elementary schools, the total is about 74.4 years old. So getting up there in age.
Can I ask you a question about that efficiency factor?
Sure.
The average efficiency factor is 25 to 30, is that for a school building?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. We typically find anywhere between, yeah, in that range for a school building, yep.
And the blue is, are those just the corridors, or that's obviously more-
Corridors, toilets, some of the mechanical space is typically what you do. Some take in like wall thicknesses, but for this kind of metric, we took circulation in those kind of service areas is what we call it, so. Sure.
Hi, I'm Eddie Wodowski, Project Manager with Tecton. This is the button of, down. Okay, good. So this really kind of just reinforces a little bit some of what Jeff was talking about. This is a summary of all of the existing schools. Again, you see the year built, the myriad of additions that were done over the years with the exception of Squadron Line. You see a pretty wide variety in terms of size and accommodations of each of the buildings. There's a slide that Jeff will talk to you a little bit later on, which talks about, in terms of if you compare the population of the school against the state standards, that the schools actually, even though they feel tight, you're actually, according to them, you're over what you have for the number of students, and it's because of that efficiency factor. So, some more points that we heard at the first forum, again, that most of the existing conditions that we brought up and presented, they weren't a surprise to anybody. People knew what the issues were at each of the schools. We heard the sustainability is definitely a very important subject, and we want to make sure that we incorporate that into any new designs going forward. And again, that schools are being, you're doing the best with what you have here. Going forward, spaces need to be flexible, not oversized, that we need to research. Trends done in the region nationally to make sure that we're basically benchmarking against them. Site schemes need to be secure, making sure that everybody is accessible past to and from and around inside the building. No preconceived ideas that really everything's on the table. We don't want to go in with any preconceived notions, really. And that we have to be fiscally responsible, of course. So, we've had quite a few meetings, as Matt mentioned, really with the Enrollment Task Force and with leadership and the Administrative Council, just kind of take you, we really started it back in, in June. And we started off with five different options of how we might take a look at the schools. We added a sixth one. As we got into August, we had a couple that we lost that just didn't seem to really make much sense to anybody. We picked up a couple others as we went, essentially, I'm trying to get you to understand, we're only going to show you really two options tonight with one variant of one of the two options. But we have explored quite a few to date. And what you're seeing, as Jeff alluded to, really is kind of the best and brightest. It's what we think is, makes the most sense of everything we've studied.
So, the next series of slides are going to illustrate a few things. The capacity of the existing buildings as it's measured to the existing state standard. That's an important kind of metric to understand when you're, when you're looking at utilization, but also the population increase at the elementary schools. So, the way that we do it is we first take the highest enrollment in an eight-year period, which is, we'll take that information from the Malone-McBroom study, which we have, and we're going to multiply that by the maximum allowable state's square footage by the state. And there's a metric there, I don't expect you to read it, but it's, you know, a certain size building, a certain grade level, you get this amount of square footage per student. And then you can, you obviously multiply it, and then you look at that square footage, which is the maximum allowable, and compare it to the existing building as a start point. So, in this particular example on Latimer, the maximum allowable, if you do that math, is about 64,000, 64,488, 64,500. And the existing building's 45,000. So, the delta, what that means is that if you were to build, add, or renovate the school, you could build for, for the projected enrollment, you could build a building about 64,500 square feet. And what you have today is 45,000 square feet. So you need to, if you were to reutilize the building, you would need to expand it by 40%. So, that's a bit of a challenge when it comes to studying the core, core of the buildings, meaning the size of the cafeteria, the size of the kitchen, the size of the gym. So those are some of the challenges that we kind of worked through when we were evaluating the options. So what we did is we took each of the elementary schools and did that math. And it changed slightly since some of the, some of the last or previous presentations and workshops, only because what we wanted to do is compare it to the highest enrollment. So we added some nomenclature there. So, so we just went through Latimer, but it's the same math all the way through for each of the schools. So, four out of the five, when you're comparing it to a simple metric like, how much will the state allow you to build, you're, you're under, under that square footage, okay? So that, that's kind of leading up to some of the, some of the challenges that we were working through when we were evaluating the options. The other piece is, you know, when, when are the numbers going to start affecting your community? And again, this is information that was extracted from the demographic study, but we circled Latimer, Squadron, and Central for this particular example, circled it and put it, basically, this, this shows the school year and the projection and the delta, as you move to the right, the delta between what you have today and what's projected. And to simplify it, in three years across the elementary schools, there's going to be an additional, around 166 students, right? So give or take 10, 15. That means eight to nine classrooms are going to be needed in, in three years. And in four years, you're going to have 200-plus, so you're going to need somewhere around 10 to 11. So, just again, further illustrating some of the, some of the, what the data's telling you, basically, in the study. So, some of the key aspects, and Eddie and I will both kind of hit this one, and then Eddie will drill into some of the details of the two options. Some of the key aspects, and we've learned from, from other studies, from other communities that are doing other studies, that are either at the beginning, or at the end, or at the middle phases, where you really want to future-proof your plan, this is a plan, right? This is not set in stone. It's a plan, and it should be a living document that, that builds in flexibility. And that was one of the key items that we heard during all of our workshops, so we just wanted to reinforce it in bold. And, and really, what you want to do is start, look at options that free up space in the existing elementary schools. Some redistricting is most likely possible regardless of the options, so, you know, there were, there's no real favoritism to one side or another. The numbers are what they are, and you're going to have to move them around. Really, what you want to do is create some space for improved curriculum, because there's, we've illustrated, there's no real room to move. I encourage you to walk through one of the elementary schools. They're using every, every space. So if we could do that in an option, that'd be great. And really strategically address those needs, you know, holistically, but also the immediate needs in that plan. So that's where the options will overlay with the capital improvement plan for things like, okay, if you're not going to get to a certain building for 10 or 15 years, you know, you need to do a roof, or you need to do a boiler. So you'll have a strategic plan. Both pieces merged together, so.
Okay. So this is the first of the two options we'll show you this evening. And step one is to create a new school, fifth and sixth grade, a lower-middle academy, if you will, on the site at Henry James Middle School. This basically allows by pulling fifth and sixth grade out of the existing elementary schools, it's two grades worth of space that you're creating. So the rest of the elementary schools would go to K to four. We're looking at Terrafill potentially is going to a pre-K and Board of Ed space, just looking at, you know, again, it's nothing against Terrafill, we're hopefully trying to keep it in circulation, but the numbers are declining, and so it seemed like a likely target. Step two is to basically, and we're not going to show you plans for these, but we've done them, we can show them to you if you need to see them, is to add or renovate or rebuild three elementary schools and repurpose Student Hill is one option, or the other option is to rebuild or renovate all of four elementary schools. And you can see the, kind of the key difference between the two is, take a look at that column second to the right on both versions, where it says future enrollment. You can see that the second option of this scheme basically allows you to normalize and make the population a little more standard at all of the elementary schools. Option two is instead of aligning 5, 6, and 7, 8, it's to add on to Henry James to move one grade out, so just the sixth grade with the elementary schools staying at K to five. And in this one, we did take a look at, similarly to the previous one, where we looked at either three schools or four, but it didn't make sense to look at three because the populations were so large, because we were only moving one grade out. So, a little bit of some of the, you know, the key differences between the two. First time you've probably seen some of the costs associated with them. So essentially, it's, it's a little bit of a summary telling you how many students, how much area is involved, and this is for step one of the project. This is not dealing with the renovations to the subsequent elementary schools. This is what you're going to get, you know, the, the first project we really need to do. Main points here, missing?
No, so, well, just to touch on the cost, so, in holistic groups, so what we use for, for costing is kind of an average, kind of industry average for new construction, for renovated, as new construction, and then for site costs. So, you have some major components, you have the site and building, which are basically the hard costs in this, in this graphic on both option one and two. And then you have what's, what's called soft costs, which are all the other related project costs, meaning furniture, computers, wiring, networking, everything. Take a building, flip it upside down, shake it out, everything that comes out, that's kind of soft costs. And then you combine those two together, and that gives you a total project cost. So whenever we show the communities, or Communities, or Simsbury, your, the dollars, we're going to always talk about total project costs, because that, pick a number, if it's 56, 50, 45, 80, total project cost is what it, it takes to deliver the project. And then what you do is you take the state reimbursement, and there's a difference in renovated, as new and new, between, last published was 24.64, they haven't published strategically the new ones yet, but, so you take that and you multiply it and you get, that's the state reimbursement. So on the left side, you'll get about a $14 million cost back from the state. We carried some kind of ineligible's, because there's portions that the state says that they may not reimburse, so we have a percentage there that we've seen as a common. And then you have the yellow, which is the, the total cost to Simsbury. So all options and metrics, everything that we studied was, was apples-to-apples comparison. And then once we start drilling down deeper into options, we'll start comparing some of the more, you know, other metrics related to projects. But that's kind of how these were, how these were set up.
One of the things I think is interesting is, I don't want to ever try to convince you that five or four million dollars is not an insignificant sum, because it isn't. But the point is, is that as we looked at all of the various options, percentage-wise, the schemes were all fairly common and fairly similar in terms of their cost, and that was a really nice thing we thought of, because it allowed us to really start to look at holistically what's best, and not really what the cost drive it. It's really what works best for the community.
Jeff, can you speak to, just go back for a second, because I think it's important in how we evolved, or the conversation at least evolved with option two, of joining two projects in fact, one.
Yeah.
Right? That it's about swing space and about breathing room. So-
Yep.
Maybe talk a little bit about that for people that are listening at home and-
Sure.
Originally, we had that sixth grade wing standing on it, in its own, and then another phase down the road would have been to address Latimer.
Yep.
Yeah, we actually get there in a couple slides if-
Oh, okay.
I think.
Sorry, Eddie.
No, no, it's fine.
Hey, I didn't say it, I would have dressed-
Yeah, you know, I-
Well, basically, in general terms, option one buys you more, more time, right? Because it's going to free up about 600-plus students all in one project, whereas if you just add the sixth to the middle school, you're only freeing up half as much. So, the reason why we coupled them together is because you're going to start to need to build another new on, on an existing site, so that you have, if you implement this plan in a strategic way- in, in a strategic way, you have swing space in order to move students around without having to, to buy modulators or do some kind of, um, I think inefficient phasing. So that's, that's the kind of basic reasons, and then we have some others to show you.
And Latimer was the one we chose, because that one was the greatest difference in student population.
Absolutely. Yep. And the condition was.
And the condition, right.
Okay, so next slide.
Okay. So a little bit of visualization, what this might look like with the new fifth and sixth grade academy at Henry James. Um, we'd originally looked at taking, having the building really more towards the north and more of a standalone sort of concept, but the feedback we heard was people wanted to see a little bit more of an alignment of the two schools and have them actually potentially sharing resources. Not sharing resources in the sense that students would go eat lunch in the other building. They're going to be separate standalone self-operating facilities. But the concept was, instead of having students come to a campus in an environment for two years, of four years, to really be able to kind of, you know, get, get a process together and, and have a, some sense of continuities, and be able to have students have shared experiences. Maybe there's a class that's taught in one building that the others can go to, or maybe teachers are, you know, sharing concepts and ideas. So we're not sure exactly what that connection might look like. It could be an enclosed piece, it could be a covered walkway, but just having the buildings essentially near enough to each other and, you know, circulation, essentially shared bus and parent drop-off around the site, and still plenty of space to have fields and play areas that are needed.
Yeah, so this is purely test fit, showing you what a somewhat like 100,000 square foot, two-story building would look like on the site. So it's nothing more, don't feel connected to it. It's nothing more than just showing that it can, that it's possible, it can fit. It, it attempts to address some of the issues or concerns we had relative to the, this option, we heard about traffic, trying to get queue lanes off, try to get bus, bus, um, bus and parent separation. So we tried to graphically in a diagram, kind of show you that what's possible. So that's what the intent is here.
Yeah, originally, I think there were more curb cuts and, you know, and to Jeff's point, the long roads that you see are trying to allow stacking and queuing space on the site to pull traffic off of the street. Okay. A slight variant here, now this is option two. This is if we were going to add on to Henry James's sixth grade addition. You see in yellow, a couple of spaces that would be added on to. Similarly, trying to address, making sure that there's queuing space on the site, pulling traffic off the road. And what we'd be looking at here is, uh, the areas in purple, essentially classrooms you'd be short by adding on to the sixth grade, or adding the sixth grade on here. And then you see on the left, they're expanding the cafeteria. There's potentially some other spaces, things like some of the specials, art and music and things like that, that might potentially also need to be added on to as well, besides just the core curriculum. So yeah, this is, so hopefully answer your question there a little bit back. Essentially, the, the big difference between the two schemes is really the amount of swing space that it generates for you in terms of flexibility of the existing schools. And it's pretty simple math. It's just moving one grade out versus moving two grades out. And so, you know, essentially, you're, you know, you're getting 640 student swing space in option one, 316 in option two. The plans, and we'll get into the schedule in just a second, but you know, if we're looking at four or five years from now, which is conceivably when the first project would be constructed, open for accepted students, you're going to need about a space for another 240.
And how long would you see them needing swing space?
Basically going forward.
I, I guess, long-term, it depends on, on how many you.
Well, in these options, so you've got that figured for how long the construction will take, which would be if, if that.
If you're doing the Henry James and a lot of lanes at the same time.
Right.
How long do they stay in that building?
Oh, probably 18 to 24 months, yeah. Something like that, yeah. Yeah.
So it'd be within one school year?
Yeah, or a school year and a half.
School year and a half, probably.
I'm thinking for the, when we go to the forum, another slide with the Latimer site plan to demonstrate for option two, that you're going to build on that same.
Yeah.
Site.
Right. Because we did cover that in more detail in the working sessions, but.
Yeah. It brings to life what that swing space means, right?
Right.
Visual.
Yep.
Well, and I think it's important, because it shows the public that you can, by building on what is essentially the.
The property.
The property, um, it's not a disruption to the working environment.
That's right.
Like, there's ways to do it at both Latimer and Squadron, and you have a Tooten model for that, if that was.
What's really important about either option.
Sorry, he had a question.
The whole swing space idea, I, I'm, I'm stuck.
I don't know what page is, but that option one.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so the reason.
Yeah, there you are.
The reason that Tooten is not in step one is because it's being rebuilt, is that? I'm getting confused about step one and step two, and what kind of happened.
Okay. So both graphics are for step one and step two. It's not, the graphic on the left is not step one, and the graphic on the right is step two. Reason.
That actually makes me more confused.
I know, it's probably confusing for. So step one is to construct the new school. Step two, there's two options. One is that you're going to keep three elementary schools at K four. The other is, there's going to be four elementary schools at K four. So Tooten is only shown on the right, because that's one of the two potential options.
Okay.
And the cost then, that you have here.
It's just phase one.
Anything about what's going to happen, whether it's three or four, or what construction has to be done to three or four, or any of that.
That is phase, phase one, first, first referendum, right? And the thought on the three verse four, and, and that was Jeff's point, I think, on flexibility with our enrollment and what people have seen in other communities, to lock in and say it's a definitive plan, say for three schools, you could get there and enrollment won't allow you to do that, or you'll have to build in South Windsor, what's happened, the last of the four builds was supposed to be a 350 student school. It is now a 680 student school with enormous cost, cost.
Yeah, so we kind of learned from some of that and from some other communities, because if you kind of go through a program, you're going to not only, you know, see the population increase that was projected, but may attract more. So we kind of flipped the plan with a five, six. If that, if that's an option that's going to be selected, because it buys you time early on for the new arrivals, uh, and then also allows, whether you want three or four elementary schools, the period of time between the first one and the second and third one is several years typically. So it, it allows you to see kind of what the demographics, let it play out a little bit, and gives you flexibility to, you know, maybe, maybe you don't build new on one and you just add rental and try to reduce some of the costs. It, it gives you that flexibility to kind of.
A timeline.
Steer a little bit further down. Right, we have that timeline.
We're saying, yeah, we don't have to make that decision.
I think you have like Squadron, that one version has 670 students, and the other one has 400 students. I mean, if you were to look at a school district that said, I've got a school that, that's 60% occupied, I mean, would you say, that's not efficient? I mean, what hap, I mean, if you've got, why would you, why would you plan Squadron to have only 400?
You'd plan to rebuild.
It would be a rebuild.
There's a rebuild on Squadron years down the road in the plans.
For, for both of those scenarios, that would not be a reuse of the existing Squadron building. It would be building new.
So that's the new.
Right.
Exactly.
The last column.
For that enrollment.
Yes.
On that side.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to think of this. I mean, it's a, it's a lot of information, and it's a lot of change that we, it, we understand the reasons for it are because we know that, we hired these guys to understand what our buildings look like, and where we need to improve them, because they're, they're tired.
Right.
And, uh, we got to figure out what's our best plan, long, to make a long-term responsible plan, that's best for our students, best for our town, and financially responsible. That's kind of our, that's our mission, it's just, it's a lot to take in.
Let's, yeah, let's go over just a basic schedule on what could happen, or put things in perspective.
Yep. So this is essentially, project one in this case is essentially step one, is what we're saying. So it's either the construction of the new fifth and sixth grade at Henry James, or it's the construction of the sixth grade addition at Henry James and a new school at Latimer. So that's project one. Assuming about four and a half to five years is really kind of the gestation point of a project in terms of getting all the ducks in a row, the submission to the state, the grant application, the time to design it, the time to construct it. If you're looking at, you know, the remaining three buildings or so, you can see we're really, it's, it's pretty far distance out. I mean, we're talking about, you know, 15, 20 years to really implement, uh, the entire plan. Could some of that be shortened up a little bit to where you start, you know, submitting the grant application for one, while you're in the midst of construction for the previous one? Sure, you know, it doesn't mean that you have to start, you know, the next one only when you finish the one before. So it could be compressed a little bit.
In, in your scenario, in that one, it's, so it's a roughly a 15-year?
That's 20.
Is it 20?
Yeah. That's 20. And that's.
Pretty. Yeah. No, no, that's, I, as Tara said, this is, there's a lot, it's a major construction, I think, to do it in a methodical process like this is the, is the smart way to do. Let's do it at one step at a time.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So we say, that's the case scenario, we're talking about, not the ideal, but in terms of if you're really putting your foot to the pedal, to the metal, if we were to go ahead and say, all right, we've figured out which one of these first steps we want to do, we submit the application to the state in time for the June 2020, so this coming June, essentially you'd be occupied roughly about four years from now, in 2023 in the fall.
So, so this is kind of a, a average project timeline.
Yep.
For, and then what, what's, the key dates that you want to keep in mind are, yeah, obviously you're going to go for grant application and state submission. So those always happen before June, right? So if you miss June, there's in like, uh, you know, July, it's, you missed the whole year. So it doesn't matter if it happens, I mean, this is aggressive. It could be the next year, it could be the following year. The, the fact of the matter is, is that once you submit that grant application, and there's modifications, because this community's been through it before, so they know, there's modifications where you may want to wait. So when you submit a grant application, you don't hear anything until December of the, the year, until you're on a priority list. Then they send it to the legislators, and then they vote for the grant application in the following, uh, spring. So not many communities, but some communities wait until they get that actual letter to start designing. So that timeframe could be six years. So it varies between, you know, that four and a half to five and a half, six, but that's kind of a process for one, and then you kind of, if you overlap them or if you don't, that's, that's what, why we want to give the community kind of a tool, so that they can kind of slide these projects around. And if you take, try to address it, the immediate needs are the, immediate meaning the five, you know, within the five years, needs with a first project, then it, that gives you that time to modify as you, as you go. So that's kind of the thought process as to how we landed where we did for right now, but it's, it's a, it's just that, it's a work in progress. Yep.
And then a variant of the schedule, so, well, first of all, this is four years from now, basically looking at the demographics projections, saying that we're really short about 166 spaces. An alternate option is, as Jeff said, it's just basically taking all the dates and sliding the year out. If you don't submit by, this coming June, you really need to submit by the following June. So all it's really doing is, it's the exact same timeline, other than a different start date, and it pushes you up to 2024. Just so you understand the ramifications, so another year, now you're up to 203 students instead of 170, instead of 166. The other piece to know is that obviously, you know, inflation isn't going anywhere, so, um, potentially, you know, we see typically about a 4% increase year to year or so. That could be another, you know, million to million and a half on top of project costs by the delay.
For those of you who haven't seen this before, because you're not on the facility enrollment task force, please ask your questions and bring stuff up.
Yeah, I just have a question on the slide that shows capacity of what you have today, where you break down like the various schools, with current enrollment, future enrollment, and then the delta with the amount of.
Yep.
Shortfall in space, I guess, where Latimer shows 18,000, 149 feet shortage.
Yep.
And I, maybe this is for, for someone like Neil, but my question is, current enrollment, say for Squadron is 580, and projected, projected 683 nine years from now, or 10 years from now. What's the most we've had at Squadron? I, I thought we used to have 700 and something kids there.
Yeah, actually. Into the 800s, but with a very different use of space.
Okay.
Where, where something like, um, you used to only have to have half-day kindergarten.
Oh, okay.
So you could use half the number of kindergarten classrooms. Uh, the Squadron line now contains the entire preschool program. Um, and so there was definitely more capacity at Squadron, but the building was just used completely differently than it's, than it is used now. Um, you know, your, your special education spaces, especially Ready, Set, Go, uses three classrooms plus an OTPT room in that school, so.
And that used to be in a modular.
I was going to say, that changed dramatically when we had the plan to remove the modulators. And I think it was 40,000 square feet of modular space we removed across all.
Every school.
Our buildings.
It's just because all we've been hearing is, population's been going down, 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 down for, I don't know, eight, 10 years, whatever that number is. And now, for the first time ever, or in the last 10 years, it went up 18 kids, or whatever that number was, 30 kids. And now, obviously, we're projecting the increase. And I'm just curious, these future enrollment numbers, if those get us back to where we were 10 years ago in all the schools?
They don't get you quite that far, but they get you, you know, maybe half.
Midway.
Midway back toward that point.
And you don't have the space you had.
Okay, because we've lost a lot.
Because we took away. I think that's an important point to make up, the number of students that we held in modulators.
And we can pull together some, we could pull together some data that's interesting to look at.
People are going to ask that.
I think that's a really important point.
Everybody knows that the number of kids has gone down and down and down, and then if we try to sell them on, oh, 10 years from now, we're going to be back to almost where we used to be, we got, you know, that.
But what I, what I would say to them, though, is remember what they said and what we've been talking about from the outset. This is also about the build.
Conditions.
Correct. I agree 100% with that.
It's, it's, these things need to be renovated, and whether we're talking, renovated to new or new, these, these buildings have got to be gutted.
Basic renovations, yeah.
See, but I think that's something that, it's something non-sovereign word, that needs to be reiterated definitely at the public hearing. And I think the why, again.
Yeah.
I think a little bit of, you know, that reality check too, is Latimer has been sitting on our capital improvement plan for how many years? Probably back when we had all those pressures. We'd never done it, we kept pushing it off, much like Henry James. So even if we got back to those numbers, the building still couldn't handle it.
Right. No, but I think that's a good point, recreating that why a little bit in some of the, maybe historical things we've even done over time.
And I think it's important, that's why, even if, if you go home tonight and you didn't get all your questions out tonight, please be sure that you bring them back up to us, because this is important stuff.
That'll help us frame, frame the next conversation.
A lot of us have seen this multiple times, and, um, anything anyone wants to, any, everyone's voice needs to be heard on this, because it's really important. Sharon, did you have something?
Yeah, so, so me being the newest person, and that's what I was going to ask about the community, so, because ultimately, that's where we're going. And how, when was this reviewed with the community from a standpoint of the depth of what you guys know?
So the first, what we call the, the current conditions, which was different than what you see tonight, which was really an assessment of our buildings. We held the public forum, uh, I believe, beginning of June.
Okay.
We are taking this information to the public forum next week. So we're advertising that now and trying to get a good turnout through, uh, the flyer that I sent to the board and.
SCTV.
Yep.
Library.
And the facility enrollment task force has public members on it that also. And the facility enrollment task board has public members on it that also brought their insight.
Right. So our hope is, after that public forum, it will really give us some good direction on feedback and help us define next steps in terms of conversations and what we need to do.
And I would recommend, if you're available, to come to the public forum.
Oh, I'm going to be at all, yeah, yeah.
What they're saying, because that's only going to help us all better understand where we should go.
And it's at the library.
It's at the library, yeah.
And if I could just say, and Matt's probably tired of hearing me say this, the one thing that comforts me though is, if you look at, I mean, these are big dollars, right? And we're talking major, major change in this town, right? But if you look at the, one of the first slides about the buildings, between 1954 and 1969, this town built five new schools. And the big ones, Tooton, Squadron, Latimer, Henry James, and Simsbury High School. So we've been here before, and we can do it again. We just, again, it's about the education of the public and...
Again, that statement right there is a good one to add to.
And I think it's, one of the things that didn't mention is, we're in the middle of hitting some questions, but I think it's important to note that the reason why this big, why the first step we picked was, is that it affects everybody. You know, by doing the fifth and sixth grade, or the sixth grade, there's a chance that that first project is going to have some amount of effect for every family in town who has a child. That's, that, that's, exactly, it's not playing favoritism, or, oh, these guys are getting something nice, and I have to wait for 10 years right away. That's, and that's the beauty of both schemes, whether you do option one or option two.
How do you make the, and I know down the road, and I know you're saying we can't because numbers could change all the time, but really, that slide on cost, I think is really kind of, it isn't really apples to apples, because the long-term, if you're going to build three new schools, or build four new schools with option one, and just renovate, or, you know, I just think that it's a little misleading that that cost dollar to comparison, because they're not really a total impact of what we're talking about over the 20 years, or 15 years, or 10 years.
I don't think you can talk about that big, I think the first numbers, I think the first numbers are really about, are you moving the sixth grade up, or are you building a five, six school? And this is what that costs you. And we're too far away to talk about what the next one's going to be, because we have to see what happens to the town under the course of...
But it's easy enough to pull together.
Right, the question to be answered.
But what about the others? That's all, I just think it's...
Do we have to move a grade up? Or we couldn't just like, move everybody from Latimer to all the other schools and then redo Latimer? There's not enough, there's not enough...
No.
No, there's not enough capacity, space.
That was an option we did look at.
And one of the pieces we haven't gotten to... Just lost Neil. We haven't gotten too far in tonight, is that as we've gone through the groups, particularly the educator's lens on this, was that at least sixth grade at a minimum, we need to really think about a different experience for our upper elementary students than we've, we've been giving them with an opportunity to really get more rigor, more option, more content specific. A lot of things, social, emotional, sports, you can do differently with that grade level of six or five, six together. And there's an efficiency aspect to that as well. We're going to have to discuss down the road when you, when you staff, you know, and you put all of one grade level in a place, or two grade levels in a place. And you don't have to look much further than to see how Squadron line is staffed as opposed to how either Central or Terrifil is staffed.
But will they have anyone at that general meeting to talk about, like, the sixth grade moving is a huge idea, and I think it's something that I think people could really get behind, I mean, because that's really going to help. So will there be anybody who say why? That's a really a big why too, is the sixth grade...
So, so our thought on this for, this forum is to present the options, and then have a panel, and be able to talk to some of those specific things. So, Erin and I would speak to the educational, the curricular component of that. The challenge is, it's how much you're talking about what bucket, because there's so much to discuss, you know? So it's almost like, think about the model, but, yeah, good point.
You know what I'm going to add to, I think it might be to give them a global perspective, which is, this is a new phenomenon for this town. We've, we have redistricted in the past.
Multiple times.
And multiple times, yes, thank you, we have. But I think also, we mentioned South Windsor, and I think maybe doing a comparative analysis of towns and why they have, that are in predicament and situation like ours, why they have moved to that. I think you need to also see what is going around in surrounding districts around the state. This is not just something that is unique to this district, but this is happening as we speak and has been happening. And I think maybe having like the, the, you know, the cost benefit analysis also, you know, where, why they got to where they are, which is probably in the same situation that we are now, in the predicament that, not predicament, in the situation that we are now. So I think if you put a little bit of a global piece on that of other districts, it gives, it gives townspeople and parents something to also compare with, with what is going on in other districts, not too far from us.
Good point.
Yeah, and South Windsor is a good example.
Yes.
Similar sort of need kind of driving things, and also that multiple phased approach to things. Their timeframe is maybe a little more aggressive than what we're showing, obviously.
Where are they in their, where are they in the plan right now?
They are on their last, going to referendum to approve their last build. So it's the 10th year of the plan, and it'll be completed probably a year, 13, four phases. They did run into a demographic issue where, as I said before, the plan was a 350 student school, and it's now going to be 680, so they still have to figure out a way, you know, to have those community conversations to move that through, because the price tag is very different. But we've been looking at a lot of their materials, how they set up their website, how they've communicated. So it's, it's a very good place to reference, I think, to your point.
I actually ended up figuring out, I was having problems, I was having problems with the numbers. I was having a problem with the numbers, and, and I think it might be helpful to illustrate when you're showing this, is that Henry James 78 is missing from, I know it doesn't change, but I started adding up the numbers, and I'm like, okay, how do I have 2,900 projected students, but only 2,300 spaces? And that's because the seven and eight isn't in option one. But it's down here in option two as sixth grade?
Living at the same, yeah.
It, it just...
Show them all, show them both and then total them so that...
Ah, I see.
Yeah, makes sense.
This way, even if you...
Continuity.
If you lined it up, you can actually see, you know, how many people are going to be at the, at the middle school or in the middle school campus versus, versus now.
Continuity for sure.
That's a good one.
Thank you. Did you look at others, I don't even know if there are other sites in town. If you're building new, why is it on the same site as where a school is now? Is it just the land is there, or, I mean...
Yeah, I almost touched that third rail the other meeting where, there's a lot of open...
Can I ask that question?
I said open space, and I got some looks. But, so we did look at, we did look at town-owned property in general terms. There's a, it's a pretty good current map of, of town-owned properties and what was dedicated to open space and other uses. So, yeah, so it was easy to eliminate a lot of the already owned properties for other uses. And then, when, once you start talking about buying private land, it just doesn't become financially feasible. So, the other piece where Henry James is a little bit more attractive, and, you know, we're not pushing for it, but the, the utilities are there, so water, sewers, things like that. When you start to dig a little deeper, there's some pretty good benefits there that make sense more than other sites, so...
I just figured, the population density is different now than it was in 1913 when the first one was born.
Yeah, that's hard for, hard to, for people to understand, is the capacity too, yeah.
And really, with the exception of Central, which is really in the best shape, and probably the strongest candidate for actually being renovated as opposed to a new building, all the other sites actually have sufficient space to construct a new school and leave the existing one fully operational until the new one is built. So, space well, it wasn't an issue, and, you know, people are already coming there, they're used to it. As Jeff said, the site and the utilities are there, seem fairly natural to continue to use them.
I think too, from an educational standpoint, transitions as well, putting a campus-like atmosphere and having the opportunity to share staffing, oversight of various departments, content areas, seems much more powerful if you're on one campus in order to be able to do that.
As long as it doesn't feel, end up feeling like two, two-year schools, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not have that happen.
Right, right.
That's really key.
And that was a lot of why, the, you saw the alignment of the two buildings together to try and tie a little more...
And an outdoor walkway is not the same thing. I'm telling you, I'm telling you, you shouldn't even be saying that stuff, because if you're doing it, if it's, if we're talking about this continuity, we're talking about sharing resources and stuff, we are not going to get a teacher to walk from seventh grade to eighth grade in an open walkway. We aren't in California.
Sixth grade to eighth grade.
You know what I mean? They might get from seventh grade to eighth grade, but I'm not sure.
He's, he's from Dallas.
I wasn't going to say anything.
It's a problem of growing up in South and going to college in...
I'm telling you, it's so much easier, it's so much easier, you have lockers outside. They really do. I mean, outside the buildings.
I've seen them.
We don't have that so much. Anyone else have anything else they want to add?
So you know, being, on what, just tagging on what Jennifer said, the new lower academy in the state, several districts have done this, and they've called it whatever they have, or two schools combined in one, or what have you. That might be also a good slide to show a comparison in some of the districts around the state that have gone in that model, to maybe reassure residents and parents that this, this was built in this district at this time, and what it looks like, visuals and, and educational and building, and just to give them an idea of what does that really mean? We talk about, you know, a new academy in, in a district. I mean, we even go to academies now, we don't even call them schools. But I think that's something that, that's a good, a good point to, to show them. I think in the other, also in going back to one of the maps, what have you, you mentioned about that there is space on the existing schools, i.e. Latimer, you know, two buildings in the school. I think it's also a good idea to show them maybe a visual map of where exactly, you know, is it going to be built on the upper fields, is it going to be built to lower, you can take over a parking place?
They have all that.
All those exist.
They all exist, it was just a matter of what we're...
Didn't want to show too much.
Yeah, and, and just to really reiterate that.
And I think Sims Ree were schools. I mean, I don't think we're going to call anything an academy. I just don't, I don't feel like Sims Ree is that kind of a town.
Jeff and I were just saying, you can't go to a five, six academy and then Henry James school.
Yeah, we're at schools, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I know they've done it, and I think mentioning them in other areas is fine. But I'm pretty sure Sims Ree needs to be a school. Sorry, that's my statement.
That's, that's weed stuff, I'm, I'm, I understand.
I do think your point is, well, a slide on showing what other school, what other districts are doing, for sure. Would be great.
Districts would be really good.
Just to what they've done, just to kind of give an idea...
And seeing their success.
Well, it helps eliminate this idea that we're doing some sort of new radical idea.
Not, not, with no foundation.
This is about as old as it is, but I think just for those that have, you know, that, that do not have a concept, like, what does that mean, you know, even like, what do you mean by a lower, middle academy?
Right, is it working or is it not?
Right, and we're going to continue to call them schools, but just what does that exactly mean? You know, look at that.
I think that's a good point, very helpful. Anyone else? Kayla? Kayla's going to be so long gone. She is going to be rocking the world somewhere, doing something special. Will you come back and check in?
Kayla, would you have wanted to go to a five, six school? Would that have interested you?
I mean, a lot of my friends from like other states and other towns have, like, their middle school is six, seven, eight, instead of just the five, or the seven, eight. So, I think it'd be interesting, and like acclimate them a little more to the climate, and, I don't know, get them more prepared to think, think.
That's a good, I think it's an excellent thought, excellent answer, good thought.
Student population's going cycles, I mean, we, you know, when my kids were at Squadron, there were a lot of them there. Yeah, I mean, is that, is that a typical cycle? I mean, are we going to, you get the end of these, these plans, and all of a sudden, we're back down at the bottom of a cycle, and everyone says, oh, what did we do?
Well, that's what South Windsor, they're saying South Windsor did that, and they're like, they're booming bigger than they thought. Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but that's what this plan has, because you could go from three or four elementary schools. So if it goes one way, you go with four, if it goes drastically another, you could...
And that goes to part, that goes to part two of the McGroom, Malone-McGroom report, because they're the ones who did the demographics. And that was like, that, that was, June was...
And where, just where we are, I'll give you a little preview of that report, because I just got it back. Where we are for the next couple of years is as that elementary goes up, that's the remaining of the high school coming down. So, our overall population of students in the school system is going to stay almost exactly the same, but it's going to be doing an elementary and high school thing that is interesting to figure.
That's very helpful. You guys all set? And again, if you have any more questions, send them to Matt.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much for all your time.
Thanks.
It's a lot of information. It's really good and...
See you on the 20th.
Yeah, right?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going into the quarterly budget analysis?
Perfect. So, in your packet, you have a detailed report of our first quarter budget analysis. So, just to frame this a little bit, the purpose of this report, it's really a snapshot in time to take a look at our current rate of spending, where we are at the end of first quarter compared to where we were last year. So, good news is, we're very consistent with, we're within 1% of that overall spending. We always want to report out at that, at this time of year. There's a couple, just a couple interesting points I wanted to bring your attention to. They're really enrollment-related more than anything else, and I know Neil's given quite a level of detail on our enrollment over the various meetings. But our instruction account, our spending is up slightly compared to last year at this point. That's our largest account, that's where we house our, our teacher salaries. As you'll remember, we added a teacher late in the game at Latimer Lane to adjust to the enrollment, and we also added some tutoring staff to support with our larger kindergarten numbers. We did that at several schools, so we've made that adjustment, and it's led to a little bit of elevated spending there. Piece I wanted to, two other pieces I wanted to draw your attention to. The one, just from an optics standpoint, looks a little different on the report. That's the equipment, new and replacement, where we've already spent down the entirety of the $198,000 budget. It's the same as we did last year, the reality there is, several years ago, I don't know if you recall this tight budget year, we moved $200,000 in equipment from operating onto one of our large grants. We spend down the operating dollars first, we still have the $200,000, $200,000 that we're managing there as well. So overall, we're in good shape, it just looks a little different when, when you look at the spend down. We spend it down first from here. The only other piece I really wanted to draw attention to was insurance and pension, which is another very large driver for us. Last year, in our conversations with Board of Finance during the budget process, we talked a lot about that line item and kind of tight sizing that line item in the Internal Service Fund. I don't want to get into too much detail on that. But we were going to allocate, and we had the agreement of the Board of Finance, $300,000 from our non-lapsing fund to help offset the increases there, make them a little bit more manageable. We're favorable in insurance in our, in our projection up to this point of the year, so it looks like we'll only need to utilize $150,000 of that money. So what I'd like to do is take some of those funds, and we will be having a conversation with the Board of Finance on that, and utilize them to get some short-term help in Burke's absence to help manage the Henry James project from an owner's rep standpoint. So I know we have the support to do that, but that's where those funds will not impact us from an operating standpoint, and we'll be in good shape. So I can certainly take any other questions, but that's a quick overview at this point in time.
Anybody? Thank you very much, I know getting this stuff together is important, and thank you for keeping up with it. Our next public audience, Mr. Kelly? All right. Moving on, our next board meeting will be Tuesday, December 10th. We will also be having the TRI meeting, and we will hear about the date of that on the third, by Thursday or Friday, we'll hear, that it'll either be the third or the fifth. And being that we don't have a meeting on the 26th, we can all go to Sims Ree High School. There'll be a football game versus Avon. Route 44 classic.
To clinch our playoff berth, hopefully.
To clinch our playoff berth, and it's senior night as well, I believe, is our last home game. So, all that, I would take a motion?
So move.
To adjourn, yeah.
To adjourn, I made a motion to adjourn.
Anybody second? All those favor?
Aye.
We're out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That'll get him, appreciate it.
And I think that was important stuff that we...
What do you think about having our...